Before we get started, I'd like to welcome our chaplain, Remco Bronet, to lead us in our invocation.
Let's pray together. Our God in heaven, earlier this week, we thought deeply about discrimination and racial hatred. And with that in mind, we pray tonight that Milton will be a city in which discrimination of any kind and hatred of any kind has no place, but where diversity is embraced and celebrated. We also are mindful this week of the weather that's moving in and pray for safety for all of our first responders, our police officers, our firefighters, our public works employees, as well as our citizens that have to be out on the road, both today and Friday. And for tonight, we simply pray that you, your presence will grace this meeting, you will give wisdom and guidance and direction to the city council and the staff that is assembled before you here tonight, and that what they decide and how they deliberate will be pleasing in your sight. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Wednesday, January 20th, 2016, to order. And if your city clerk will please call and roll and make their own announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call and roll for the January 20th, 2016, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment, either during the public hearing or during your call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak are to be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization, if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that the individual has filed a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurmond.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koots.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lutz.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morik.
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember Joe Longoria is traveling and absent. Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everybody here tonight. We appreciate you being here. So, Sudi, if you'll please call the first item.
Our first item this evening is the approval of the meeting agenda. This is Agenda Item Number 16-011.
Okay. One thing I'd like to add an executive session and move that to, or executive session to discuss pending litigation and personnel after, and move it to after the consent agenda. Anything else? Anybody? Council, staff? Okay, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Thurmond, second from Councilmember Koots. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Sudi. Next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinion on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes for remarks. Sudi, do we have any general public comment?
We do not, sir.
Okay. Click and move to the consent agenda. Please call that, those items.
Our first item is approval of the December 14th, 2015 city council work session minutes. Agenda item number 16-012. Next is approval of the December 21st, 2015, regular city council meeting minutes. Agenda item number 16-013. Approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Universal Engineering Sciences, Inc., for geotechnical recommendations for the fire training building. This is Agenda Item Number 16-014. Next, approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Universal Engineering Sciences, Inc., for geotechnical inspections related to site preparation for City Hall. Agenda item number 16-015. Our fifth item is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Pond &amp; Company for civil design related to the fire training building. Agenda item number 16-016. Our sixth and final consent agenda item this evening is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Engineering 303 LLC for the Batesville Road Drainage and Shoulder Improvement Project. Agenda item number 16-017.
Okay, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, now, as we move on our agenda, if I could have a motion to move into executive session to discuss pending litigation and personnel. Okay, I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. All right, do I have a motion to reconvene?
Motion to reconvene.
Do I have a second? I've got a motion, second to reconvene. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. All right, we don't have any items under reports and presentations, first presentation or public hearing or zoning agenda, so let's move to unfinished business, Sudi, if you'll please call those items.
First item is consideration of a resolution, appointing or reappointing members to Milton Groves Green for the City of Milton. Agenda item number 15-320. Deciding was deferred at the December 21st, 2015 city council meeting. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay, I want to open up for a motion or second.
Mayor, I'll move to approve a resolution accepting the res... No, that's the wrong one, isn't it? Resolution appointing or reappointing members to the Milton Groves Green for the City of Milton. Agenda item number 15-320. Second.
Okay, I have a motion, Councilmember Lutz, second from Councilmember Morik. Discussion, I just, we did defer this to talk about the make a, or the structure of the board. I would like to see us in the near future, and this is no, this is all positive towards the board and the members and what they do, but I would, I know even we've talked with the city attorney that maybe the bylaws, we could relook at them because in some ways they're not, not fair to the board itself, and bringing it more in line if it's going to, as we have it, a city board that's more in line with our other boards, like the planning commission and whatnot. So I would like to, in the very near future, take a look at that, see if we can come up with a structure that might work a little bit better, but that's all said in, you know, positive towards what the board does and whatnot, so it's not a, not a negative thing.
Along the same line, if we're going to do that, maybe we take a look at, if we've got any other strictly volunteer organizations, take a look at that structure and see how we're doing with our other organizations also.
Okay, anybody else? Mike, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. So at this point, we would, I would, if Margaret, John, and Janet could come up, I will swear them in. You guys will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
The Milton Groves Green Board Member.
Milton Groves Green Board Member.
Of the city.
Of the city.
And I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Janet, John, please proceed.
We gotta drag some kind of felt tipper pen across it to make it work.
Let me push this next agenda item on or move into new business, and I don't know if I'm going to sound this one myself or not, but it's consideration of a resolution accepting the resignation of City Manager Chris Lagerblum, Agenda Item Number 16-018. And I'll just say, Mayor and Council, we've talked about this in executive session, we've talked about it individually. I love the City of Milton, and I have absolutely loved working for a place that, really, all I have to do is love the community. And when you can find one of those and happen to make a living doing it, that's that old adage that, you know, that's really not work, it's really just the way you live. And so, Council, it's been an amazing journey. It's been fun birthing a city and having some day-to-day responsibility for it. I will miss it tremendously, as I will miss each of you. But as you know, I have accepted a position in the City of Fort Lauderdale and will be leaving Milton with a final date of February 12th. This resolution would just accept that resignation. So thanks.
Well, I would say, Chris, we are, I think I speak for everybody, but certainly sad to see you go, and certainly appreciate everything you've done. It has been a great ride. We've accomplished a lot of stuff together, and you've been a huge part of that, so, but that being said, totally understand, and it's a great opportunity, and fully support you moving forward. So, again, this is, this is, you know, not a resolution that I will, you know, wanted to do, but certainly support you doing it, and appreciate everything you've done, so.
Thank you.
So I'll ask you, do we have a motion or a second?
If we booed, we get kicked out?
The rules and procedures say.
All right, who wants to make a motion?
Somebody has to, so.
Do it for her. Hatchet, Mayor.
Yep. I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 16-018.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion, Councilmember Hewitt, second, and Councilmember Koots. Again, just, this is all in the spirit of a positive thing for you, Chris, moving on, and we appreciate everything you've done, so. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Sudi, if you please call the next item.
Our next item is consideration of a resolution appointing Stephen Krochoff as interim city manager. Agenda item number 16-019. Mr. Kenjor.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Section 3.24 of the City of Milton Charter anticipates that there may be situations where the city manager is vacant, the position of the city manager is vacant on a temporary basis. Of course, that would be the expectation in light of the previous agenda item, that there will be some sort of a recruitment process or an executive recruitment process with respect to filling the city manager position on a permanent basis. Section 3.24 anticipates, however, while that process is ongoing, the filling of the city manager position on an interim basis, and therefore you have in front of you this evening, a resolution that commencing effective when Mr. Lagerblum does in fact leave the city, that Stephen Krochoff would act as the interim city manager until such time that Stephen Krochoff would act as the interim city manager until such time as there is a permanent replacement. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, I wanna, I wanna appreciate Chief Krochoff has, has accepted the offer to fill in as interim city manager, and as we've discussed, and I appreciate the council supporting that. So I would like to have a motion on a resolution to accept Chief Steve Krochoff as our interim city manager, and we appreciate, appreciate you stepping up and helping out, Steve.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we accept a resolution appointing Chief Krochoff as interim city manager, agenda item number sixteen dash oh one nine. Second the motion.
Okay, I've got a motion, Councilmember Moore, second, and Councilmember Losk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you, Steve. Unless you, you didn't wanna change your mind, did you? All right, we'll move on over to reports. One thing I wanna kinda update, a couple of weeks ago, I think it was, Scott Reese had made a public comment about some land and folks with larger pieces of property and difficulties in development, and as far as, you know, large lots with fire protection. And I had actually, had been talking to him before then, and had recommended that he made a public comment, so everybody's aware of that. And I sent an email not too long ago that said we, you know, been meeting with staff, so just kind of an update. I believe that the applicant that brought it to bear with him, they've got a meeting with staff this week sometime. And just so the council has staff to bring forward to us, you know, there may be some decisions we have to make on our, you know, going again. And it, I hate to say this, we're not the fire chief, but obviously, from the fire side, you want certain things to be, you know, you want them to be a certain way. But also, if we wanna look at it from a land preservation and our overall development, we may have to, I'm asking staff to bring us options that we can have that may feel, you know, we may have to have some trade-offs here, but, and still keep everything in line, so just be, you know, give you guys a heads up that staff will be working on some, some items that, or some options that we can have, that maybe would facilitate that a little bit better and easier for folks to, you know, develop large lots, rather than force them to, because of costs, have to, you know, do smaller lots, so. Anybody on council have anything they wanna report on? Okay, well, I'll move to staff. Chris, do you have anything?
Mayor, at this point, let me get to the department updates, I'll tell you that we're, got several scheduled meetings this week to start a very seamless transition period, so. We're starting to transition some information over to Steve, and Carter, and Stacy, and all is well on that front. If I need to report anything differently than that, I'll let you know. I tried to glance at my calendar real quick to see if there's anything I could tell you was coming up, and I think I might have the slowest phone in the history of the earth. So let's move to the published staff reports, and then I'll see if I, if there's anything that I need to bring you up to speed on between now and the next time we get together. So we'll start with Chief Edgar, who I got to say through a heck of an event the other night, so great, great farback.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just, closing out two thousand fifteen, I just wanted to share with you some of the stats that we had. Starting off with rural metro, of all the calls that they responded to in the North Fulton cities as a whole, the emergency calls, they responded within the contract guidelines ninety-five percent of the time, which is beyond what the expectation was of the contract, so they met that just fine. And then on the non-emergency calls, they met that at ninety-eight percent of the time. So, and the difference there is the response times, the emergency calls, they have to be there within twelve minutes, and then when the non-emergency, they have to be there within fifteen minutes. But our response times within the department are six minutes on average, so we're there well beyond them already starting inpatient care and all of that, so. And I just wanted to highlight some of the, the fire department's totals. We responded to two thousand three hundred and ninety calls in two thousand fifteen, one thousand one hundred and ninety-six of those were EMS calls. And the number of training hours was eighteen thousand three hundred and eighty-nine hours, that's just about, just over three hundred and six hours of, per person of training hours, which includes fire and EMS-type trainings, so we are busy in doing that, as well as all the other things that we're doing. The last thing I just wanna touch on was that we've been invited by Cambridge High School to do a static display at the, the new veterinarian, I guess, clinic school that they've just built out there. So we'll be, we'll be out there on Friday at nine AM and participating in that program, so. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to ask, and again, thank you for everybody who can make it to the banquet, I hope you had a good time and enjoyed that.
It was very touching.
It was.
That little girl was.
You know, that's what I was gonna say, for those that weren't able to attend, it's always a great banquet, and it's always, you know, great to hear about and see, you know, the awards and honors that folks get, and what's really, you know, special touching is, you know, when you, when you read off all the different cases without given information, but where people's lives have been saved, it, it really brings it home. But one of the, the really neat thing was up, up front, there was a table and a man, he was twenty-seven years old, from Ohio. He was actually a firefighter himself, and a police officer, but I don't know this, remember all the specifics, but his three-year-old daughter, who was down here either with in-laws or somebody, had fallen in a pool and basically drowned, and was drowning. And got to nine-one-one call, and fortunately, I can't remember, was it Station forty-two?
Rescue forty-two and engine, engine fire from Alpharetta.
Okay, was, you know, was near there, turned around, went to first responders, the firefighter or EMS of ours that got there first, made the decision that we're not gonna wait for the ambulance, we're gonna take this little girl on to hospital, and you guys performed all the stuff that they're trained to do, and they were able to, one of the guys was able to call the father in Ohio and explain to him what's going on. Later, the father told me he had been through that a couple of times, and had lost a two-year-old just recently, right about that time. And so you can imagine his angst, he's six hundred miles away, and our guys are taking care of his daughter, who they didn't think had a chance, or, you know, very. And it was really neat to see that man sitting there with his little daughter and walking around, and perfectly fine now, and to see him get introduced to the, first time to the firefighter that saved her life, and hug, so it was, it was very, very special.
And it's, it's always great to be able to stand up there with those families that come back like that, because a lot of times firefighters never really know whatever happened. So when we can follow up like that, and have a story like that, that just really makes it, you know, that's what it's all about, so.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so we've got finance.
I'm gonna take care of finance tonight, because Bernadette had to go home due to possible weather, scary weather, and she lives north of here, so she wanted to go ahead and get home. So one of the things that she wanted me to point out was two thousand sixteen business license renewal packets have been mailed out to all the active businesses. And that, I believe, was over eight hundred packets, so they are due March thirty-first, and we have a process in place this year, so if they become delinquent, then there's certain steps that be, that are taken within a specific timeframe. The two thousand fifteen audit field work is scheduled to begin next Monday, so we are very busy trying to get everything prepared for the audit field work to begin. The field work would last usually about two weeks, and then it takes about a month for all the reports and everything to get generated, and the notes, and the CAFR to get put together. So we should have the CAFR in the beginning of March ready to be published. Also wanted to point out that the general fund stats on this, on the spreadsheet, they'll be available in February. We had some, some computer issues, trying to get everything uploaded into the right format, and so it pushed off the, I guess it delayed the financial statements getting done. And then a side note from, not, not finance-related, but this Friday, this Friday afternoon, the Rotary Club of Milton-Winward is going to be hosting an event over at Cambridge for Stop Hunger Now. And this is an event where we package about fifteen thousand meals that will be delivered to third-world countries. These are meals made of rice and vitamin packets and dehydrated vegetables, and, and it's, it's really neat how they do the whole process, it's a whole assembly line. Kids in the high school get really involved in it, and they're very excited to be there, to be able to be a part of something this big. So if you have time, please, you're welcome to come out, it starts at three-thirty at Cambridge in the cafeteria, and we'd love to have you guys.
Dave, oh, I skipped you, Dave, I put an X by you already, come on, Dave.
He didn't have his pile, that's why.
All right, well, I gotta tell you guys, December was really busy in IT terms, not because we necessarily planned it all that way, but that's the way it turned out. We had the beginnings of our rollout for the cloud in City Hall, and that was going pretty well. We also had a power outage in the middle of all that, while I was out of town, and VC Three handled themselves very well. Got things back up and running, even though the power was out, I guess, the whole neighborhood. And when things came back on, they were able to fix what went wrong, and get things back up and running for everybody, and was shipshape by the time I got back, so it was really good. Four hundred and sixty-three tickets in December, it's about triple what they had the month before, again, they handled it pretty well. And we're moving forward with our rollout, we're still working on fire, get them up and running on the cloud, and then police will be last. So all in all, things are going pretty well, any questions?
Any questions, I T? Joe's not here. All right, thanks, David.
Good evening, I put on with your packets our two thousand sixteen event schedules, just so you'll have that. It's pretty nice, now that we're in the groove of all of our events, we're able to really lay out throughout the year what we see coming up. Of course, we always like to have additions and changes, so if you have any suggestions, we're certainly always open to them. And please let me know if you have any questions with those events. A couple of things to highlight with social media, I'd like to point out that last year, we were able to grow our Facebook reach by almost two thousand people, which is pretty incredible to have people following us, two thousand more just in last year. And Instagram, even though we started in December of, of two thousand fourteen, we grew it by seven, over seven hundred people. So that's pretty incredible to be reaching that many people, not a lot of municipalities take advantage of Instagram, so that's a pretty good format for us to reach people. Those are the two things I had to mention to you all tonight, any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Be always entertaining.
Good evening, um, the one, one stat I did wanna report from last year was our turnover. We ran about five percent, we lost six employees, which is very low for a little company. I think it says, says a lot about the job that everybody does here, and the things we provide our employees. They seem to be a pretty happy group and wanna stay around.
It didn't count for us, did it?
No, because we're in sixteen. We've selected a consultant for our salary survey, we're in, we just got the contract back today from Legal Review, forwarding that along to him to see if he has any concerns about the changes that were made. Hopefully, we have that in front of you very shortly, and we can begin that project. And the last thing I wanna report was, every year during the holidays, we run a maintain, don't gain contest for our employees. The word of the concept is, is that from Thanksgiving to New Year's, you try to maintain your weight within two pounds, not gain more than two. So this year, we had about thirty-three people participate who made that goal of not gaining more than two pounds. And cumulatively, between those thirty-three participants, we lost forty-seven pounds between Thanksgiving and New Year's. So it was a good contest again this year, had some good results, so pretty proud of that, and we'll keep that going annually, so. Any questions I can answer for y'all?
Okay, you want to say anything?
Thank you.
All right, Carter?
Well, good evening, it's been a quiet couple of months, but we are slowly getting back up to speed here, so I've got a couple of things to update you on. Our Crab Apple project was awarded to Baldwin Construction, and this is a roundabout and road improvements in the Crab Apple area. That process, the paperwork process for GDOT is on about a forty-five day cycle, so we're anticipating probably notice to proceed almost any day now for Baldwin to go ahead and get started. And I would expect probably March before we see anything really rolling out there, but that project is moving forward, so we're excited about that happening. The roundabout up at Birmingham Helpwell Road, we're still in our utility relocation phase, AT&T is our last utility to be relocated. And they have been working through all of this weather, they're out there today, in fact, so. They had about a thirty-day timeframe on that, which would put them on a completion date about the second week, the second week of February. And then Baldwin will be ready to get geared up full speed to go ahead and complete that project. Look, still looking for a, a early summer completion date on that project, so hope to see a lot of work going on up there in the near future. The Webb Road intersection improvements here at Deerfield and Webb Road, we had postponed that and rolled that into our paving contract. We did go ahead and put our paving contract out early this year, we got bids back this week, kind of in anticipation of a big package from GDOT coming out, so we wanted to get ahead of that ballgame. Bids did come back in under budget for that project, so the paving came in under budget, and it looks like the intersection also came in under budget, so that worked out well for us, we'll continue to evaluate that bid, and hopefully award that here in the next couple of weeks. Mayfield streetscape improvements, the sidewalks along Mayfield, both sides of Mayfield, between Charlotte and the main intersection at three seventy-two. We did get the notice of award, or the notice to proceed from GDOT for our right-of-way acquisition. And in this case, it's really driveway tie-in easements that were going after no actual right-of-way, so we're currently working on title work on that, to move forward with that. We had been indicating a completion date of September twenty sixteen, I anticipate that's probably gonna move out a little bit. We looking for a construction letting probably in June, so we'll probably be closer towards the end of the year with the completion of that project. Our CTP is moving forward. We are right now in the needs assessment phase, we've had a survey out for the past couple of months, we're winding that up. The initial survey will be complete in January twenty-eighth, I think is our last day for that. And so far, we're pretty close to a thousand responses on that, so we've had a pretty good feedback on that particular phase of the project. We'll be working through that needs assessment through February, we've got a couple of more focus groups that we'll be working with, and then we'll be moving into the recommendation stage, and so the, once they get the needs assessment done, they will put out another survey, more focused survey on some of the things that they found out during the initial one, so look for that coming out probably late February, early March. And a couple of projects that we've been following with GDOT Two, Bethany Bend at Highway Nine, the intersection improvements there, the signal modifications there. We've got our initial plans into GDOT for their review, probably two to three weeks of review time with them on that. And then it'll be turned over to their maintenance division, and they'll be working on the actual implementation of, of those improvements. On that same note, it looks like the Highway Nine widening improvements are getting moved up. So we had initial completion date of twenty twenty-four on that, we haven't seen the latest schedule, but we anticipate that coming up two to three years on the completion date of that, so another big project. Also, State Route one forty is starting to show up on their long-range plans again. So right now, the plan is twenty thirty-seven, and I know that sounds like a long way out, but for a project that wasn't on their list last year, it's back on their list now. It didn't. But I will say, they have accelerated the bridge improvements, so they've got a bridge improvement scheduled for fiscal year twenty sixteen. So that is, will be moving forward towards the end of this year, beginning of next year. And I think the way that plan works out, they're gonna do a parallel bridge to that, and then the current bridge would be one direction, and the new bridge would be the other direction. So we have a total of four lanes of the river at that point. And I think that is it for me.
Wow. Well, actually, I can decide, there's a lot of stuff going on, so.
Starting to get rolling again.
How about, you wanna give me an update on City Hall?
Oh, City Hall, right. We anticipate trying to get a contract to you for the February first agenda, to get New South underway and under construction at first part of February. They're gearing up and getting ready to go.
Okay, Karen, and then Bill?
Do we have any idea if the new bridge would be east or west of the current bridge?
At one point in my life, I knew the answer to that, but I didn't know it was back on their schedule until today, so I can find it out.
I just wondered whether or not it was gonna be in Milton or in Roswell.
Well, it's going to be, I don't know. I know there were some historical issues on the north side of the bridge, so something makes me think it'll be to the downstream, to the south side of the current bridge, but I'll have to look that up and see what that plan is. I'll have to look that up and see what that plan is.
Okay, Bill?
What are the project limits on one forty? Does it go beyond the, the river into Cherokee?
We're, we're trying to find that out, it does, it goes up into Cherokee County. Initial indications that we saw were Rucker Road up into Cherokee County, it's a pretty substantial project.
So we want to have a traffic jam right there at the bridge, then? Secondly, do you have a GMP on the City Hall?
We don't yet, we're anticipating seeing some prices, not on the conform set of plans, but on, at least the design set or the permit set here this week.
All right, Rick?
The improvements at Bethany Bend, is that the no turn on, on right signalization?
It is, there'll be a number of things I can bring you a plan that shows a little bit more detail, but no right on red, will be some phase changes on the north and southbound left turns, as well as the east and west left turns. I can get you more detailed plan on that.
I'd love to, in fact, we, I know some of the homeowner associations are having their meetings coming up, so maybe we can try to get that information for that. And then as far as the widening of, of Highway Nine, and impacts to Bethany Bend as far as rerouting, is that tied in to when we actually will do the, the widening of Highway Nine with GDOT?
With these.
The redirection of traffic, some of the things that are being looked at.
The split intersection would be part of the Highway Nine widening, yes.
So we'll do the signalization improvements to try to make it a little bit safer, but then the actual changing of the route, that would be when we're concurrent with the widening?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else? Thanks, Carter.
Thank you.
So, all right, does anybody else have anything? If not, we will conclude our meeting, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a second, I have a motion and second to adjourn, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.